The Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting on August ninth, two thousand seventeen. This meeting to order this evening. And we will have implication. You know, this, uh, this evening, we understand that we have a tribal member, you know, in the state over there, room chief, and so we moved the, uh, the meeting over here. And so we, uh, we want to remember them this evening in our prayers. Uh, also, there's also going to be a dinner, uh, over here at the Elder Center for, uh, Autumn, Autumn. And so she's going off to college, so that's going to be at six, I believe. And so we have a business to take care of and things. One of the things the family asked is, you know, we could try to get done by, uh, six thirty today, and I said, well, we're going to try. We're going to try and, uh, and things. So, um, they, uh, they said their loved ones wouldn't want the business to, um, end. The business needs to be taken care of. She also, uh, family also stated about the, you know, Pawnee had their ways is to not have things when folks are in state and things like that. So we want to, we want to honor that this evening. But, uh, so let's, uh, let's have a word of prayer, and we'll be going this evening. And the senior asked our ED if he would offer a prayer first. It's me.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we want to, first of all, thank you so much for all the blessings and opportunities that you bestow upon Pawnee people and Pawnee Nation, heavenly Father. We want to thank you for blessing us all with safe travels here, heavenly Father, to conduct the nation's business. Tonight, we, we gather, heavenly Father, with heavy harvests. We are mourning the loss of one of our tribal citizens, heavenly Father. We ask that you please bless that family and give them the strength and comfort and guidance that they need during this most difficult time, Lord. And heavenly Father, we, we ask your blessings on, on each and every one of us in this room as we conduct the nation's business. And, uh, we ask, as always, heavenly Father, for your wisdom and guidance in making the best decisions that we can for the Pawnee Nation and the Pawnee people. And we do this all in your name, heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we, at this time, we also ask for all those, for blessings for all those families who may be going through difficult times, Lord, and may you just, uh, give them the guidance and strength that they, they need and the peace of comfort and peace of mind, heavenly Father. We always ask protection and blessings on our veterans, heavenly Father, no matter where they may be. Heavenly Father, we just, uh, we're so grateful for, for all that you do for us, and we humbly ask and say these things in the name of thy Saint Jesus Christ statement.
Amen. Thank you. And let's move on down to, uh, road call. Let me say this before we vote. Welcome our visitors, overview, our visiting with us this, uh, this evening. Glad to, glad to see you here.
President?
Here.
Terrell Walcott?
Here.
Tricia McCray here. Angela Conson?
Here.
Sammy Atson here. Donna Hare?
Here.
Charles Nychy?
Here.
All right, and we do have a call. We will move to item number three, which is the approval of the agenda.
President, can I make the motion that we accept the agenda as scheduled for August the ninth, five thirty P M, for Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting?
All right.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded by Dr. Charles. Call for the vote.
Terrell Walcott?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Conson?
Yes.
Sammy Atson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nychy?
Yes.
All right, so the agenda is approved. Move on down to item number four, Business Council Travel Request. Are there any travel requests? All right, and hearing none, then we move on down to, uh, item number five, which is whole business. And item number one is discussion and approval of the two thousand seventeen ICBG Campground Project Budget. Now, this is, uh, uh, we've, we've been sitting on this one for a little while and, and things, and it's been asked of me, uh, we could, uh, bring this back and see if we can, uh, make a determination of whether to get going on it or, or what on it. So we are bringing this back, the Campground Project. Reva's here, uh, and we have the, uh, packets and the information in the packets and all the meetings that we have had. So any discussion?
Reva has nothing to add to what's already been stated many times over in the past. Let's move forward and, uh, get this going and, uh, and see if I can, uh, invite you with this, uh, item and, uh, let's proceed with, uh, with this, uh, project.
You know, it's the campground project?
Yes.
Okay.
And you realize it's a million dollars?
Yeah, I made it now, yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I would like to know more about it, and I'd like to know, um, and have some type of justification on spending a million dollars for electrical and a restroom and a kitchen. I mean, that makes no sense to me. I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just doing my due diligence, folks, as a tribal member and spending money. I don't feel like we should be spending a million dollars. And what's our income for that?
Two hundred and sixty-six, but I think it's leverage. There's some income, right?
Yeah, um, it states in the packet that our cash leverage amount is one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. We have Pawnee Pride, who's, um, leveraged some equipment through their program of fifteen thousand dollars. And then the Pawnee Nation Department of Transportation has also had incurring of equipment and, um, their resources of ten thousand dollars. And then we have a, um, land appraisal, there was a good chunk of land that we took over there, and we, uh, wired twenty-five percent of that land appraisal, which comes up to sixty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, but, which equals the two hundred and sixty-six, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the leverage amount.
For the match.
For the point requirement.
Okay.
I want everybody to really consider all of this before you decide that you want to move forward.
Yes. How long's this been discussed? How long's it been going on?
About that long.
May?
I think it's in May.
Um, it's, uh, the timeline that was provided, we had a community meeting starting on May sixth, twenty sixteen last year. And then it was tabled, um, February, I believe, twenty-first, twenty sixteen this year.
February of this year? It was discussed again?
It was, uh, what I put forth through, through the Budget Committee to approve my federal monies, which is eight hundred thousand dollars. And it was brought to PVC and it was tabled February twenty-first, twenty sixteen.
So how long have we known how much this is going to cost a tribe?
Um, we brought it forth through the Proposal Review Committee, which contains, um, PVC representatives. So they get to see the budget and everything, and then it was approved through resolution also on PVC.
But what, but that, when was this? When was the first time we actually knew when how much it was going to be?
That's what we decided on.
The resolution.
When the, you know?
When the resolution was passed, June fourth, twenty sixteen, and it had the cost in there.
June of twenty sixteen, a year ago? Over a year ago?
Yes.
And we've known what the cost is going to be for over a year?
Yes.
And we're still talking about the cost?
Well, yeah, like the pool. Same thing like the pool.
When we submit an application, we have to do a resolution. And it identifies the amount of the award, the federal and the tribal match.
Sure.
And so council passed the resolution to go ahead with the application process, and then they come back when it's awarded and go through the budget process to...
Sure.
To do the, uh...
I'm just wondering, at what point did we know how much this was going to cost?
Well, and, and how many bids were...
February or March?
Pardon? How many bids did we get?
Andrew, and this is just, this is the, this is the approval of the budget side of things. It's just to get started. Um, I don't know exactly how many bids we had. How many bids we have? Three, four?
There's no bids on this because we haven't started.
Oh, that's right, we haven't even started yet.
We haven't started this process yet, so I'm just waiting for...
This is just the...
To approve the federal budget.
Yeah, that's right.
Let's talk to me, do the, what now?
This, this is, because the grant, the ICBG grant is eight hundred thousand plus matching. The ICBG grants are always going to be a million dollars. We don't even know the price of the budget yet because we haven't even sent out bids yet because we, we, we're still in the budget process of approving. We have to approve a budget before we can go out to bid and CM and get all that other stuff to get a final number.
All right, thanks.
So question? Yeah. So we can approve this to get moving along and, and not be committed to...
Like the tribal funds at this moment?
No, we would have to commit. To me, if we're approving this project, we would commit the tribal funds. We either...
And we know how much that is?
Yes, one hundred and seventy-five, seventy-six thousand?
One hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars.
All right, so that would be our tribal commitment for this project that we've known about for over a year. And it needs, uh, a resolution passed to move along.
Yes, we see that.
So the discussion is, we're going to be having to put out a hundred and seventy-something thousand dollars?
That's what you're proposing to me.
Okay. Do we have it?
At the same time that we're laying people off and tightening budgets and all that stuff, we still have that kind of money?
We have two, about two point four million dollars in reserve as I've reported out. And it, then it's up to this body to determine where they're going to put those resources. Yes, we tightened up the budgets to address the shortfall, and, but we still have that amount sitting there for the projects.
So before we started discussing all of the funds and stuff, do everybody think this was a good idea?
Seven people did.
Are we, are we in agreement that's a good idea?
Seven people did.
That's the majority, right?
Seven people showed up at the meeting. Now, this is the, the actual community meeting. Only seven people showed up.
What about the council?
We have it.
It was, it was discussed in a strategic planning session, and it was held on there that, um, which project can move forward, and this is the project that was discussed.
So, so people in council have looked at this and thought it was a good thing to proceed with? I'm kind of long with Darrell, let's get moving. All right. So we need a motion to approve the resolution? Yes, we do. I made that motion. I have a motion by Dr. Charles to approve the campground project. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Well, I'm going to say this much, folks. We are still strapped down at, at, all of our income from TDC is down. We have, we are tightening budgets, we have, we have cut tremendously across our staff and, and all kinds of places throughout our admin site. And if you want to go ahead and, and spend another hundred and eighty thousand dollars to hook some more wiring up out there and build a bathroom, that's on you. I am not voting for that. I'm just saying.
For clarification, we have not downsized. We haven't initiated a riff.
But we have stopped doing spend, right?
Um, within moderation, within, as long as they're within their budget.
Right.
So they haven't made a comeback, they just have to stay within their budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, my question, what, where, where would this money go otherwise? I mean, is this a...
We're not in the urgency.
Well, we need to, we as a council need to stra, do, finish our strategic plan. So we can identify the projects that we want to complete with these funds that are sitting there.
And you don't feel this is a project you want to complete?
No, I mean, I voted for the resolution. I voted for the grant, you know, uh, the people, the community, although participation is always what it is, seven to fifteen people vote on these projects, and the ones who, the majority wins. So the campgrounds is what the people voted on, although there was in, what, what, seven to fifteen people maybe responded?
Yeah, and I will say this, it, it was presented in the ICBG, um, PowerPoint to the, to the council during the strategic planning session, but the year before that the campgrounds project was actually, uh, where we had more participation, I think we had twenty to thirty maybe, but it was an evil, it wasn't even with the pool project, but the county council just voted for the pool. So, so this was an, you know, like you said, you know, sometimes we get a lot of participation at these meetings, sometimes we don't. We had it on a Sunday afternoon where we were trying to have everybody involved, but, you know, we just, you know, we, we got what we got.
Sure, the meetings are secret. Come or don't come.
I would like to know, the tribal members that are here, what was, what, I mean, would you all want an upgraded campground? Uh, that means new electricity, new bathrooms, showers, um, harbor, and they're going to develop a walking trail, uh, there for health and disease prevention type activities, so... And it's going to cost us a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do it. That's, we're getting eight hundred thousand dollars from the, the federal award, and our tri, our tribal match is a hundred and seventy-five thousand. It's a grant that we received.
Terrell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I've been speaking for myself, of course, of course, but the larger issue, I think, is that strategic plan that you all started two, three years ago. And it's that strategic plan that you put in front of the people, they approve it, and then when decisions like this come forward, you say you got this much reserve, and here's the project, well, here's our plan, well, it's in our plan, let's go for that. Then that way, we know that we're going to do a campground this year, and maybe next year we might do the pool or whatever. But this way, do you, do you understand the, the thinking behind that? That's, that's where I'm coming from, but, yeah, I'd, I'd like to have a campground, but I don't know what those other monies could be used for. Do I want those, it to go somewhere else? I don't know, because I don't know what the plan is. I...
Anybody else? I'm ready.
Um, well, that's a lot of money. And, yeah, we need a campground, new campground, we need all that. But we have a lot of people here that would do it for free, volunteer to put a new harbor up with some of that money. And the new wellness center that was brand new, ten, twenty years ago, is dilapidated, you know, I'm ashamed of it. You know, there's showers in there, restrooms in there, both sides, full, you know, and why can't the campers use that, you know? Clean it up a bit, use fifty thousand or however much for that. And that's the fitness area, you know, it's indoor. Yeah, we can have a walking trail, but there's already enough walking areas here anyway, you know? Ain't nobody walks, I don't see very many people walking, you know? Um, I'm just biased on that because it is to deal with your health, you know, and culture. But I just see, you know, we already have these establishments in place. We could borrow them from another department. The campgrounds could cook over here. The campground people can shower over there, you know? That's just my input.
Thank you.
Well, um, I'll say a little bit too, you know, that, uh, you know, we could just, if our, um, our groundskeeping department would take care of home, you know, what we have already, you know, we'd be able to, uh, you know, it might still be, uh, pretty decent shape. It seems like, you know, they don't, uh, they don't do what they're, they, uh, need to do or something now. And then, uh, like, like Nino was saying, you know, that, you know, put, to let the people come in, you know, and help out, go over there and do a community, you know, because, uh, and then Reva's talking about that, you know, that they met on Sunday. Well, I never heard, I was waiting on, you know, I want to go over there and get in on some of that, you know? But, uh, a lot of people didn't know that they were going to meet over there, so, you know, it should be advertised big time, you know, that we're going to talk about this and, you know, let the people know. But, uh, you know, it is what it is now, so, you know, I'm, uh, I'm thinking that, uh, you know, it'd be good to fix that up, you know? We use that campground down there a lot of times, you know, the, we've been, uh, double booked, went over and put, you know, told them we wanted that campground, we needed it, you know, we're going to be having meetings, Native American Church down there. And then the community building, get over there and there's people already cooking in there, you know, then what's going on, you know? So big confusion, you know, that they don't seem to, uh, take us serious over there, you know, the department where, you know, we go over and request that, those facilities, and then we get over there and the bathrooms are locked. And then we get inside, finally get them to come down there, you know, and they open it up, and they're filthy. So we got to try to clean up. We got visitors coming from, you know, uh, out, out of town, out there now, that we got to clean it up, get it all cleaned up. So it's, you know, I don't know, we need to tighten up on, you know, things around here, you know? Our building, our, you know, trading post too, you know, ceiling's falling all out, you know, they don't do nothing about it. So I don't know, our department too, uh, you know, our roads, they could have came over, painted those stripes in front, but, you know, they don't want to, you know, they got a, they got a real nice machine that does, that's what it's for, is painting the stripes, you know, striping the roads and parking lots. Why, why is it they won't, they won't help out, it's right next door too? But anyway, you know, it's, uh, you know, there's a lot of things, you know, that, uh, that I'm really worried about and concerned about, and, you know, so, uh, I don't know, that's a lot of money to spend again, you know? And then they talk like, you know, there's going to be some cutbacks, and like, why do we have to be cutting back, you know? And then TDC's up there riding high on the hog, you know, they, they don't seem to be cutting back nothing there. But, you know, our people, our working class people down here, you know, they're getting cutback, you know? That's what I'm hearing, I don't know, I want to come over and find out, you know, say, hear a lot of rumors, so I want to come over here and find out, you know, what's going on, you know, with our people, see about it. Been praying about it, you know, come over and find out, you know, see what's going on here. You know, because I'm, uh, I'm for the nation, man, I'm, I'm good hockey, proud of it, you know, Pawnee and all the way, you know? And I want to see our, I want to see our reserve look real nice, you know, I want to see us go forward, progress, you know? If we just could get together with these departments, we have the tools, we have the equipment, you know, we could really make our, you know, our, our, our home nice, you know? Then, over there, the, across from that, that building too, that, that, uh, uh, multipurpose building, that parking lot, you know, they took old busted up concrete, you know, it's just a ice ore, you know, and they got equipment, they could have, they could have landscaped it real nice where that water drains out, but instead, you know, they took broken up concrete, packed it all in there, it looks, you know, it looks, looks bad. Why? Got all this equipment over here, why can't they use it? You know, so, yeah, we got the equipment, we got the people, I think, and the know-how, you know, to, to fix things up here, we don't have to be spending all kind of money, you know? Trying to get things done when, you know, we got, we got people and resources right here that could make a difference. I'm willing, you know, I'm willing and able and ready, you know, so, you know, in a way I can be of any help, and I will. You know, I helped store out over there, you know, I didn't ask for no money or nothing, you know, I just did it because it needed to be done, you know, it's because it's ours, you know, that's public place. Went in there one night just sweating, and I thought it was a sweat lodge in there, you know? Called up the manager, I said, hey, you need to get some people notified, this place is hot, you know, it's, people's not even, they come in and they're, they're sit down at the, the machine, and, you know, pretty soon they're like, it's just too hot, I can't stand it, and head out. What's going on with it? Well, it's been down for a couple weeks, you know, so, why? But, you know, and then the workers, they have to work in that, you know, be stuck right inside that building, so I was like, why is it like that, you know? We go unplug that air conditioner over there across the street and let them sit in it hot and see how they like it, maybe they'll get off their butts and do something about it, you know, and get something going for us. You know, that's a public place, you know, a lot of people, you know, come over, cross the bridge, go over there, that, they enjoy that, you know, spend a lot of money there. They don't want to sit in there while it's hot. Yeah, so, you know, I'm, uh, I'd like to see our campground's fixed up too, you know, get it better than what it is. That's a lot of money though to put into that, you know, what kind of electricity or lights is going to cost all that? Better be good, you know?
That's all.
Well, I think, can I make speak now? So I think that if we didn't want, they have it down in Wichita, right, in Anadarko, they've got, uh, a dining room, they've got shower, bathroom, nice, you know? Here, they camp and they have to go somewhere else to do those things. It would be nice to have even a two thousand square foot building, twenty-five hundred square foot building, just to accommodate a big kitchen and the restrooms and a little dining area. This, from what I understand, is going to be RV hookups and this and that, and, I mean, we don't, we don't even use that for RVs, I mean, it's just so silly to me. It just goes all over me because I, I try to treat this place like I might, my own, out of my own checkbook. And I'm not, I am not going to spend a million bucks on a pool, and I'm certainly not going to spend a million dollars on the park, a campground that doesn't accommodate our needs. It's just simple. And I, and, and I think, even with the pool project, I think this council deserves a seat at that table to design that, to design what we want for the people. Not, not, not for a team to go out and decide what we're going to get, I think that it needs to be brought back here. And that's the whole problem with the pool. We, we heard and we objected, so it's just a, it's just a whole bag of worms, really. You know, I would love to see it happen, but I'm not willing to put a hundred and eighty thousand dollars out when, when, you know, everybody's been, you know, told that our, our budgets are, you know, froze and we're not hiring and we're not doing anything. It's just prudent business.
I think, I think, I think part of this frustration comes from the process of the ICBG grant itself, right? Because we have to forecast what we want as a community, and then we have to write a grant with no, there's no plans, I mean, it's, it's basically what we write in the grant is, this is what we want, and we're scored on it, and then we get approval or not not, but then we haven't even started the design phase yet. So I think this is just an ICBG process that, that makes it difficult for, uh, I think anybody to visualize actually the end result, because we don't get that visual until after we engage an A and E firm or, or somebody else. Because ICBG doesn't require that when you apply, they just require that you, you write what you want to, want, want to have. And, um, so I think that's, that causes a little bit of frustration.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Angela for opening up the floor for the tribal members that have made their way to the Pawnee Business Council this evening. Um, you know, I'm kind of new to the community, but I've been watching from afar for many years, and we, we have a lot of need here in the community. And I understand about grants and so forth, that's going to benefit us as tribal members who participate at the doings, you know, there at the campgrounds. Not a whole lot, you know, participate, I've gone to one or two dances over the last ten, fifteen years myself. I've seen improvement there, um, but, you know, we may do. Uh, our old people, they may do without all of that, what you're talking about. And there, there were certain times at, of the year that we participated and did dances and, um, you know, brother here said, um, about the Native American Church, I don't even see a grounds there anymore where there's been meetings there. But nonetheless, you know, we've made do with what we've had, but, you know, we, we have priority and we have need, we have programs such as the, the property program, we have the Terrell that can hire, you know, manpower to provide that, that need that we have. Maybe we could have a grant that would sustain, um, extra funding for those particular projects that, um, I'm sure each pro, uh, each program, you know, also has needs in there too. And as a tribal member and as a tribal employee, you know, where I work, we have a great need for a lot of improvement. So, you know, with this reserve, that's, that's quite a bit of money, over two million dollars in reserve. And, you know, I guess my question is, how and when, you know, when this, this money comes in? And is it information that's provided to us as a tribal member that, okay, well, this is what we have in reserve? And, you know, what can we do to help improve? well, this is what we have in reserve, and, you know, what can we do to help improve our Pawnee tribal administration? You know, where, where's the input with tribal employees? I was told that, you know, as a tribal employee, that we help take care of this tribal government as well, as long as you, as, right along with you Pawnee Business Council members. We do that. And I take pride in, in my job, you know, I, I answer the phones, I answer, we're, we're a pretty busy little program there with two people. We could certainly use a little bit more staff there, and if we can hire more out of this reserve for one or two years, you know, it won't have to be forever, but that would really help in, in some of these programs, I'm not speaking for any program, but right now I'm speaking for a tribal member, when I hear that our tribe has 2.4 million dollars in reserves, it's like, wow, that's great, but let's, let's make some priority here. Yeah, I understand about grants, but, you know, let's make some priority here, that, that's really needed. And, you know, I, I went to TDC board meeting the other day, oh man, we have a great need as far as our assets are concerned. And if the Pawnee Tribal Council and the TDC can meet and come up with a strategic plan, maybe for two years at the longest, rather than sit on a grant for a year and a half and, you know, not know what to do, but to come in and collaborate and communicate and coordinate what we have together, then we wouldn't be wasting time like this. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I think Treasure Thompson put it well when she said that we would get a nice million dollar facility for 175. And I know that HUD, that, I think that the HUD funding and the HUD projects are limited. I think we always have to look, look at them as if this is the last one, you know, that, that we will go after, and I know that there are those that use the campground, and, and I think it would be used more, and I think people would be really proud of it, you know, if it were fixed up better and with the electrical and, and all that. And I've seen, I've seen to where, you know, they needed people to come out and, you know, volunteer on getting ready for the different dances at the campground, and there's not very many people that ever show, you know, that, that come out and do it, it's usually, you know, a small, a small handful. And the meetings, the project meetings, they're open to us, we're invited to them, and so we can go to every, every meeting and have our input from the very beginning and just then help design it the way that we want it. And so, you know, I, I, I think that we should go forward with the campground project.
All right. Yes, your turn. Okay, well, thank you. All right, well, we have a motion and a second on the, on the floor. So let's call for the vote.
Carol Walcott?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, abstaining. Angela Thompson?
No.
Sammy Adson?
No.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nye?
Yes.
Two, no, and one abstaining. Okay, so the ICDBG project, campground project is approved, so let's move on to new business.
Bruce, I'd just like to state that the main reason for voting no was that we have limited reserves and we don't have a strategic plan in place, so I don't know where our vision is, where we wanna go with this reserve dollars, we were talking about the ag, ag project, I know that's in the back, you know, and the Bison project, but we really need to do some strategic planning to get these priorities on where we're gonna spend this money. So that's, that's my reason for voting no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right. Let's move on down to item number six, which is new business, number one is Pawnee Nation quarterly reports, and so we have the quarterly reports which have been submitted, we have them online. So we can entertain a motion to accept the quarterly reports.
President, this is the quarterly reports for the tribe.
Yeah.
Yes, second quarter.
All right.
Quarter.
For Andrew Steen. Make a motion that we accept the quarterly reports as written.
Motion is made. Your second?
Second.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
Carol Walcott?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nye?
Yes.
All right, so the quarterly reports are approved, we move to item number two, discussion and/or action regarding PBC meeting schedule. And Dr. Charles, you brought this.
Yeah, it's, just personally, if we could move the second, the first meeting of the month to a night, it'd be much easier on me from a standpoint of getting away from work and my, when I'm on call, my call coverage starts at 5:00 in the evening, so it's much easier to get somebody, or to have somebody already on call, no one had to try to arrange to get somebody to back me up like I'm doing tonight again, and it would just be more convenient. I don't know if it's gonna be more convenient for anybody else, but it sure would for me to move that from my daytime to nighttime meeting. Doesn't matter.
I've asked for that before, you know, the, I, I've been a big proponent for evening meetings, it allows for our constituents to, to come in from their workday and, and join us and, and add value to it, I'm all about that. I, I think that a 5:30 meeting is reasonable and I think it's prudent. If we're here full time, that's a lot different, but we're not, so I think that, that would work real nice for everybody.
Yeah, I don't know.
Adds value to everybody.
What, night would be good, but I'm, I'm always off on a Tuesday night.
I would say Tuesday or Thursday.
Tuesday or Thursday nights.
Evening, 5:30.
I don't have a problem with the evening at all, but my Mondays and Tuesdays I try to keep for my personal business.
Sure, me too.
You know, consulting business with my clients, you know.
It's Tuesday.
Yeah.
I'm always gonna be on call Thursday.
You're always gonna be on call? I think, well, Wednesday's church and I do, so. Well, I'll just be, I'll be busy all day Tuesday. It'll be a 12-hour day for me. Okay.
I would, if we go to an evening Tuesday, Thursday, I would need 6:00 starting time because I can't get from campus, I teach, I get, my last class ends at 4:45, so, you know, it would, plus that's heavy traffic time, so I would need to, so that I'm not late for meetings.
Might be fine with 6:00.
My goodness.
I got you, Darrell.
I'm fine. That gives me plenty of time to sleep in.
I feel your pain here.
I'm rested when I get here.
I'm good.
It's fine. I'm pretty flexible any day of the week, especially the evenings, so.
Tuesday at 6:00 would work out for me.
Good for you.
Yeah, I can work there.
Only, only day would be, I'll have it on Wednesday, you know, on the church.
Sure.
Tuesday'd be fine. 6:00.
Okay. Tuesday, Thursday then?
Tuesday, Thursday on Tuesday.
So are you okay with the evening?
The third, yeah.
Okay.
Or the fourth?
The second meeting of the month.
The second meeting of the month, I'm good with that, yeah.
And they'll both be at 6:00?
No, five, the Thursday one will still be at 5:30.
5:30, okay.
And not sleeping? Well, resting.
Yeah, that'll mean I'll be a little bit late, yeah. I'm okay with 6:00.
Just go 6:00 and just keep it at 6:00 and then wait, keep it uniform.
And then, okay, there's no guessing.
And then Tuesday, Thursday.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, 6:00 it is.
So, we don't, we don't need a motion on that one?
No.
Okay, we just.
Better look refreshed. They're perky.
I feel, that was easy. Yay, thank you. Same heart, you know.
All right. Item number three is approval of Resolution 1746, table treaty.
I make the motion to approve this resolution number 1746, we're moving.
Motion is made, is there a second?
This is just a drawdown on money.
Yes.
My second.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
Carol Walcott?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nye?
Yes.
All right, so that is approved, we move to item number four, approval of Resolution 1747, the election results. And so the...
Approved that there's gonna be a runoff?
No, what we're doing is approving.
Approving the results of the election. And as the outcome is totally set, we're just, we're just certifying that the... Well, doesn't the resolution also state that there's gonna be a special election?
There is a runoff.
There's a whereas that says that, and this, when we certify the results initiates the part of the ordinance for the runoff, so.
Sure, okay, so it's to certify the results and it's also known that we're gonna have a runoff?
Yes.
President Pratt, how does this affect the people that protested?
That has already been dealt with, and they've already been given the results of the, their protest.
Are those, why are those, I mean, why don't we give copies of the, copies of those in the, I mean, why do, I mean...
Why don't we know this?
Are they public? To me, they should be public.
I don't know why, but we are going to put them on the election commission because we, we talked with Andrew and talked with Mr. Mason, and we had them block out, you know, their, their addresses and stuff like that, but we are going to take them, and I'm just gonna send them to you guys. I was trying to get that today with the conference meeting.
We, we need that communication, that's pretty important.
They've never been posted before.
They've never, we've never posted.
And I don't know why, 'cause I think that that's, that's public, it's like a public comment period, where if you have a public comment, it's posted, of course, your, your personal information is redacted, but, you know.
Right.
So that's gonna be, that's gonna be taken care of, so we can go on with approving this thing.
Yes.
Our motion is approved, Resolution 17-47.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
No, no seconds. Call for the vote.
Carol Walcott?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Abstain.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nye?
Yes.
I'm abstaining because I don't have enough information.
All right, Resolution 1747 is approved, move on to item number five, approval of Resolution 1748, empowered communities for a healthier nation.
Yes, this is just a grant that we went forward to further extend Pawnee pride, so we're just asking, it's a three-year cycle for $350,000, which doesn't require a match, so we're just asking for approval for resolution.
All right.
What's the funding agency?
Human Health Service.
It's HHS, they moved it from CDC.
Minority Health. Office of Minority Health?
Yeah.
Great, good deal.
All right, entertain a motion.
And this has gone through proposal review?
Mm-hmm.
I make the motion to approve. My second.
Motion's made and seconded. Call for the vote.
Carol Walcott?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Nye?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 1748 is approved, we move to item number six, approval of Resolution 1749, NABDI feasibility grant. NABD?
Yes, this grant, we went forward to do a feasibility study on the ag program.
And this has gone through proposal review? Um, I have a question on the last whereas, it says the Pawnee Nation will results from the feasibility study, is there word?
Yes, there was a correction that I made on that.
Oh, okay. They're on the table. On the table, okay.
Yeah, I noticed that I had some type of reasoning with that, so I'll redo it. They will publish the results.
Okay.
Because the note for requires, and I know it's a long resolution, they require most of that verbiage in there as our mandatory controls.
Is there a funding amount?
$73,000.
Is there a reason why it's not in the resolution?
I, I didn't ask for it, it didn't, the number didn't request it, there's no match on those, mainly it's paying for the contract court.
The contract court to get the study.
I think it should be identified on here. So, I'm at, yeah, that should just be standard.
Normal.
I, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1749 with amendments or edits. My second.
Motion been made and seconded with the edited part. Call for the vote.
Carol Walcott?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nye?
Yes.
Resolution 1749 is approved, we move to item number seven, approval of Resolution 1750, appointment to the Supreme Court. And so we have had the position, we've got one position open on Supreme Court, we had, we have eight who have applied for the position of Supreme Court, that is Susan Arkakita, Daniel Crawford, Kyle B. Haskins, Roger Wiley, Carly Griffith, Hoppit? Hoppit? Hoppit. Bobby Cannon, John Paris, and Mitzi Menzer Reese, Mitzi Menzer Reese. And so, we have, so, put your, would you lap on her?
and Angela and I were all the ones there, and, and I think that it's, to look at names and to look at credentials is, you know, you can, you can, you can get an idea, but I, I think it really comes from talking to the people and interviewing them, and had I known that it was just gonna be us, then I would've asked that it be rescheduled, you know, for another time. But they, you know, I don't know if the council would be interested in, I mean, if you're comfortable in going forward, I, I can make the choice, 'cause I was here for all the interviews, I interviewed them all, so, you know, we can move forward, I just think there's some blind, you know, some blind selection going on.
For a major position.
For, for a very important position.
Yes.
I would have to abstain. For, for that, that reason.
And with, and with that idea in mind, it's really important that we even attend commission interviews. I never really... I never realized how important that was, and I've started attending them huge. Even if it's just on the phone, even if we just do phone interviewing. We need to all engage. I agree with you, Donna.
So my other, my other issue about that as far as staying at this time is that we have some really big-time things that are coming up with lawsuits and stuff that we're gonna have to really be careful about who we have on our Supreme Court, because the direction we're going is a brand-new direction, and it's gonna end up in the tribal court system.
And I think it might be, serve us well to set up another round of, you know, maybe look at the top, select the top ones, you know, that we feel on paper are the best ones that we may, you know, wanna interview, but I, I think what...
Sure, like the top three and then we'll interview.
Yeah. Something like that.
I'd go on that, I'd go on.
Would you wanna do that, then, let's go with the top three, and then, then we'll interview them?
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable doing that.
Sounds, sounds better. So let's, uh, let's go ahead and make choices, and then we'll go with the top three.
Okay.
And we'll do interview. What you do?
I lost my post-it.
Well, here you go, you can have that one.
We have more.
It's stuck on your shirt, you can't see it.
There it is, look at the forehead.
Where's my glasses?
But let's not Terry. Yeah, yeah. We're gonna have to do it. Because several more wanting to know how soon we're gonna make the selection.
I'll say Terry. Yeah, now I don't, now I really not want to put anybody on here.
I was hoping to see Pawnee, but we didn't have any Pawnee supply. And, and there was some confusion whether it's a six-to-eight-year term.
Right, the resolution says six, but the constitution says eight.
We need to make sure we get that resolved before we go into the round.
Did you guys already submit? Everybody's already submitted?
No, no.
Did you lose your post-it?
Oh, you got one?
You guys, we're down to like five minutes.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so they're writing three.
We're not writing three, we're just writing one, right?
Just one, writing one. Oh, we're just writing one?
No, that is top three.
And then I would take the first one? Yeah.
And they post it. Give me a good one.
Okay, so we gotta do three?
Just one.
Okay, just one. Did you just do one?
Just one, right now.
She's gonna have twelve, twelve posts it to this.
Trying to deliver baby with all kinds of postings on there. That's right. I'll be up here. Okay, look at that. Okay, yeah.
Get another one there.
Okay.
So how?
Yeah, so the, the top two, right, is Susan Arkaketa and Bobby Cannon. And then we have three, we have three more to review. So pick again, you guys. Return. I'll give you the list.
Do what?
Give me the whole answer. Okay, we had two, but then was there a power for the third position?
Yeah, like a three-way.
Who's, what are the, who's the top two? Susan Arkaketa, two, Daniel Crawford, one, Kyle, one, Bobby Cannon, two. Okay. So it's between Daniel, Kyle, and Roger for the third one.
Yeah.
What's your recommendation?
Kyle.
Kyle.
Is my recommendation. He's willing to work for free now. He's got a lot of tribal government experience in Supreme.
One, two, three, four, I'm missing.
Is it?
Yes. Okay. Please read the map out for the record. One, two, three, four, I'm missing.
Is that it?
Still one, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Is that one?
I think that was.
Thank you, Sammy.
You're welcome.
She should have.
It was on the right cracker.
She should have four, too.
Yeah, she should have more than ten.
All right, Charlie. We got five for Kyle on that one, one for Roger Wiley, and one for Daniel. Okay.
So the three are?
Susan.
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 Kyle.
Kyle.
Kyle B. Haskins and Bobby.
And Bobby Cannon, so we will have a, set up a meeting, I mean, a interview for those. And so what we need is, we need a motion to table Resolution seventeen fifty.
So moved.
I got a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Who was the second?
Uh, Dr. Charles.
Carol Walcott?
Yes.
Trish McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes.
Okay, so Resolution seventeen fifty is tabled.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanna make one comment. I know that you'll have Bobby Cannon on here, and I, as a tribal member, I want each one of you to know that I oppose that. I know he came in in a committee meeting composed of some staff members and a council member, and blasted the council, and refused to move an account that he was taking care of into the normal accounting system. I think he finally did it, but it took him months. We don't need that kind of attitude on our, as our Supreme Court judge. Please take that into consideration when you cast your vote. Thank you, Coach.
Well, now as it stands, Kyle's first and Susan then.
No.
No.
We'll go with the three. All right, uh, let's move on to item number eight. Budget committee recommendations. A, approval of Resolution seventeen fifty-one, Pawnee Nation twenty eighteen comprehensive budget.
Uh, you all have this comparison in front of you like you all had last year. It identifies all the federal budgets and the indirect cost budgets and the general fund budgets. The total twenty eighteen comprehensive budget is ten million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars, which is comprised of the federal awards, the indirect cost amount, as well as the general fund, which is tribal resources. So...
I have a question.
Sure.
We didn't stretch our language, did we?
No.
Okay.
What we did, they had proposed a position, and instead of doing one position, because we wanna keep both, both boards, we don't wanna lose any of them.
Sure.
So the budget committee recommended that they do a contract to keep both of them on, within the language program based on contract. That way, um, with the amount of money that we, um, that they have in CRD, plus there was an extra, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was like fifteen or sixteen thousand?
In the Salazar.
In the Salazar.
Yeah, that was already appropriated.
That was already appropriated for language outside of a school, so we moved that into their budget. So with the portion of CRD's budget, and, and then that amount, which, which will cover both positions on a contract basis.
Outstanding. That, I've heard a lot of people ask me about that.
No, no, that was, we wanted to keep that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
Me, too. I've heard everybody did it for the class, a lot of class.
Any other questions?
Not for me.
No, okay. The resolution before you identifies all of the revenue, um, and it also identifies the shortfall of sixty-two, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, is it, why do you have that? Can I see the reservation? Six hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. Um, as you know, my goal was to reduce the shortfall each year. We started out with six hundred. We went to three hundred thousand last year. Well, with the shortfall in revenue sources from TDC and other areas, that's why we are back up to the six hundred and twenty-two thousand. Andrew in his shop did a good job on getting it down, because we started with all of the requests that we got in, and when we issue budget call, we tell them to dream big. Dream, put, give us the ideal budget that you want. You may not get it, right, Andrew?
That's correct.
You might not get it, but go ahead and submit it. So they did, and at that point in time, when we got all of, looked at all the budgets, made sure everything was the way it was supposed to be in regard to edits, adjustments, and things going back and forth. We started this process in June, started meeting in June. We finally finalized it, what, last month?
Last month.
Yeah, and so, um, like Jul-, like July thirty-first, wasn't it?
Correct.
So we, we've really scrubbed these, and we've really worked hard to get them to where, um, that, the, the shortfalls, even at that. And we feel it's manageable because of a number of reasons going into twenty eighteen. And we, we're gonna look at these, I know it looks grim from the twelve million dollars of budget we had last year to a ten million dollar budget this year. But, um, once the expansion picks up out there, we're gonna be monitoring the data, and we feel like out within the first quarter, first, first two quarters, we'll have enough data to make some good projections to ensure that, um, to make those adjustments. And look at, you know, look at restoring or even, um, to see where they're at. Because with this budget, this comprehen-, comprehensive budget does not include a COLA. So they will not be getting a COLA this year, so I want you all to know that. And it's based on those, some of those reasons, and, um, it just, that's just where the numbers landed because of the revenue.
And that includes council?
That's, that's what...
That includes council as well, everyone across the board, yes.
So, I see, I see the changes and things like that, but I'm not, I'm not that worried about this time. I'd be worried in three months from now, when things are opening up and running, and it's looking like it's not, you know, making up the losses, that'd be a different story. I really think that once everything's done and it opens and it's full, full speed ahead, that the casino's gonna get out of the hole.
I think so, I think so, too. Um, and we, um, so, so it identifies, this resolution identifies all the estimated projected revenues from all the federal sources, and then it, it shows you all the expenditures minus those, and then identifies the shortfall.
What is DNRS, non-fed activities?
Uh, that's Division of Natural Resources, um, non-federal resources.
That's, that's money we like to allocate to our, our, because right now our Rangers, if, if they just stayed on federal stuff, then all of their cases and prosecution stuff they do would have to be handled by the feds. But if, by giving them FTEs on tribal funds, that means that they can build cases for, against tribal law and tribal court. Um, because if they're just supported a hundred percent by the feds, then they have to do a hundred percent fed missions.
So you robbed Peter to pay Paul.
Well, no, we, we, we give them, we give them a little bit of a budget for tribal funds so they can do tribal activity.
The change is ninety thousand dollars to, in their favor. Right?
Huh?
They, they started, they started, their seventeen budget was sixty-three, and their eighteen budget is one fifty-four.
We're projecting large budget cuts in ETA programs on the tribal side.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Thirty-seven percent across the board.
Yeah, the Environmental Protection Agency is, um...
Thirty-seven percent.
Thirty, going through a thirty-seven percent cut. So we had to make up for those dollars on the tribal side, uh, because that's your environmental protection laws and things like that. The other piece of it, what he was going with is that when they get these federal dollars, they can only do what's in that scope of work underneath those federal dollars. So if they're out there doing notice of violations on tribal land for tribal, um, tribal, um, members and things like that, they have to be paid out of a tribal fund, otherwise it's not, not, um, not allowable cost.
Isn't it also to keep records?
Correct, yes, correct.
Record-keeping is more tribal.
Yeah, because we have to, if it's fed, if it's fed, fed stuff, then we just have to report everything to the feds.
Um, I have a question. Okay, so on the elder handicapped and emergency assistance, uh, last year, when this passed, we were looking to see if we could lower the age to where they did on income eligibility. Um, are we gonna be able to do that this year?
Where are you at, Donna?
Oh, it's on, um, line, um, ten, ten, uh, is the...
I think if that's a directive...
Ten fourteen.
That the, that the council wants to go for, then they just need to direct Andrew to revise the policy and bring it back.
I would like to see it lowered.
Yeah.
I would like to see it lowered.
The budget lowered?
The age.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That they have to meet, that they meet elders' assistance.
I think eighty.
Eighty.
I thought we, I think we lowered it to seventy-five.
Was it seventy-five? Is it seventy-five? Okay.
But I think it needs to be a little bit lower.
Yeah, seventy, maybe. Okay, well, could we bring that, that back and look at it?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think it needs to be looked at to see.
Okay, okay. I know there was a concern at the time about the user, you know, there were a lot of them. They, they thought that there wouldn't be enough funds to get them through the year, but...
Yeah.
But that's one of the things that I, that I hear from the elders, that you really like, not, you know, not to have to go by those guidelines.
We need, we need those, those kinds of direct service programs that we provide need to be looked at on a yearly basis and that thing.
Thank you.
So it's a separate issue from the budget? If you do that, then it can go back and change it?
Yeah, yeah, we can prove by legend with that, yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I make a motion to approve Resolution seventeen fifty-one.
Okay.
The motion, hold on, hang on a second. Seventeen fifty-one. Call for the vote.
Carol Walcott?
Yes.
Trish McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes.
All right, Resolution seventeen fifty-one, uh, twenty eighteen comprehensive budget is approved. We move to, uh, thank you, approval of budget modification, contract support costs.
Okay, what this is, um, we received a letter from IHS, and we were, oh, there's an overpayment of five thousand and eighty-four?
Seventy-eight or something like that.
Just a little...
Five thousand, seven hundred and...
Okay, yeah, just about fifty-eight hundred dollars. And so, um, in order to pay this, it's an overpayment that we received, so we have to pay it out of tribal dollars on contract support costs for, um, that time period. So we did a budget mod for, and took it out of property's budget to pay for it. So that's what this budget mod is approving. I make a motion to approve.
My second.
Motion is made and is seconded. Call for the vote.
Carol Walcott?
Yes.
Trish McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes.
The motion is approved on the bud-, bud-, budget modification. Move to item number nine, discussion on the Pawnee Nation oil and gas statute.
I'll make this really quick, oh, sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to say, on reviewing the statute, I think it's ready to be passed. We need this statute a big way, as I said... We need this statute a big way. As I said before, the nation needs to know who is on their land, what they're doing and why. And we also need to, uh, we, if these people, if they do wrongful behavior, the statute provides a way for the nation to help them remedy the problem. And also provides a way for the nation to, uh, impose fines on these people. So I think we need this statute. So this is only the bigger, this is a big part of the bigger picture of, of getting a handle on our environmental regulation here in the nation. And I strongly urge the council to approve it. Also, I want to say that there was a working group on this, myself, Andrew, huge part, and then also the DNRS guys. Uh, it was, uh, it was a good work effort and I think we produced a good product.
This is eight months and I told you guys that, you know, I would present it to you so you can look at it. It's comprehensive, it's big. Um, it addresses our most pressing needs with notification of who's on our land and what they're doing on our land. Um, and who's going to be on their land, the subcontractors. Um, it's very, um, as far as we're concerned, we make, we make the permitting process pretty painless and easy and cheap and affordable for folks. We just want to cover our administrative costs. Penalties though are pretty steep, um, because like I told the council before, I've toured all the land that we own, the Pawnee Nation owns a hundred percent, all has oil field based on it. All of it, poly lines or whatever. Um, and who bears the cost of cleaning up those incidents? Those are us. Um, you actually have two statute, or two statutes that I wanted, wanted the council to look at. Um, one is, one is the Energy Act, uh, which covers everything from the exploratory phase all the way to the closing of the well. The others are, are Water Use Act. We already regulate the, the quality of the water. We regulate the pollution of the water. This is regulating the quantity. Um, we have seen out in the, in, in some of our instances, again relating to oil and gas, where these people will say that they're gonna get water from a surface pond, but end up throwing a pump in the Simran River and pulling out, you know, millions and millions of gallons of fresh water. Um, this regulates that activity. Um, and this is also part of my regulatory scheme to, to just in, increase the amount of information we have on who is doing what on our land, how they're doing it, and making them provide us with reports and all that kind of stuff. So this will help in our overall structure to keep and prevent what happened, you know, a year and a half ago or two years ago here at the nation. So this is just for your review. I mean, this is, this is just for your review to look at.
The water statute too. Uh, what's interesting is the Pawnee Nation is, well, is it the only one?
One of the only ones.
One, one of the very few nations, Indian nations in the United States, which has been, uh, delegated the authority to regulate their own water. And so I am very big on the nation reaching out, taking that authority and exercising it. And of course, underlying all of this is not only our environmental concerns, but also this is an excellent, uh, way for the Pawnee Nation to truly exert some, uh, some sovereignty, some big time sovereignty, so.
Yes. So I, I like, I like the idea that we're not discouraging business, but if they don't play right, making them pay for that. And the other thing is that, you know, we, we are, we have our nation here in Pawnee, but the things that happened here with, with tribal courts and all that stuff, those, that's gonna go up to nationwide with other tribes and stuff. And I, and I know that water is a big issue with a lot of big tribes, especially back out west. So I think we can be the precedent setting people. That's good. I like that.
But I do, I, I would appreciate feedback if you have any, if you have questions, because these are, again, my, my purpose is not to discourage people because, from coming and doing business with the Pawnee Nation. It's only to discourage bad actors from coming to do business with the Pawnee Nation, get those people off of our lands for good forever. So we put in things like in their statute that provide for asset seizure. We've never had that. We have it in our criminal and our civil code, but we've never had it in our environmental laws. So I think that any feedback you can provide us will be greatly appreciated. And then, and then, once we get all that done, we can bring it back. We'll, we'll, we'll put it on, um, our social media sites for public comment. And then, and then we'll bring it back for, for approval.
That was one of the things that the working group wanted to be very careful about in light of what Dr. Night G said. And that is, uh, Andrew, not since the very beginning, when either one of us or both of us ever talked to anybody who's in the oil and gas business, we always make it clear that the Pawnee Nation is pro-oil and gas. Uh, and it'll, but the thing is, is we want it, the nation wants it done right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Everyone, we've got Night reading.
Take your time. It's, it's, it's big.
All right. Uh, we will move on to item number ten, discussion on the MMA event. Roger, you still out there? All right.
Here we go.
Yep, you're, you're up.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I believe it was July twentieth, we had a meeting, uh, that President Pratt put together with Carmen Topachi. Is she here tonight?
No.
No. She couldn't, she's a woman.
Representing Ticket Storm. And, um, she talked to us about the possibility of having a fight here in Pawnee. At the time of the talk was having the fight at, uh, the Wellness Center. The promoter's name was Jeremiah Jones. Uh, the promotion was called Gladiator Fights. And so from that meeting, we continued talking with him and to Carmen. And one of the areas of concern, it would cause a risk in this venture, was the fact of having the fights at the Wellness Center versus having the fights at Stone Wolf, where we could hope to capture some of the patrons from the fight at the casino before or afterwards. So we've been working on that and we've come up with a plan to be able to host the fights at Stone Wolf under a tent if need be, and then use part of the twenty acres uh, for event parking, if you will. And with that, um, obviously be able to, uh, capture the customers into the casino after the fights as well. With this promoter, the, uh, the ticket sales and, uh, food sales, beverage sales would all go to us. Uh, there's a forty-six thousand dollar fee with this promotion. Our part would be some advertising here locally, including Stillwater, providing tables and chairs, security and parking. Uh, they would put, they would be responsible for everything else. Carmen with her company would be over the ticket sales. Um, and actually they would, uh, sell, the, the tickets would be able to be sold by mail, online and at the site the day of the fights as well. The date that is being considered is September twenty-second. That's on a Friday. That is the Friday night before the Big Twelve season opener for OSU on Saturday with TCU. Uh, so the thinking was that, you know, the student body will be staying in Stillwater to go to the ballgame. Also with the crowd that will be coming in expecting to, to that game, to be able to help in us, um, filling the seats at the fight the previous night or the night before. Yes, sir.
What's, what's our estimate of the number of seats you would need?
Uh, we would, we would look to be seating approximately a thousand people. That would break down would be tables. That would be, uh, depending on the size of the tables, which is probably gonna be using the six seaters, uh, would be eight hundred dollars a table rent. If it's the six seaters, eight seaters or a thousand is what they're suggesting. Uh, and then what they call floor seating, which is a closer seat, would sell for fifty dollars a ticket. And then general admission tickets, thirty-five.
Rain out?
That's the purpose of the tent.
What if the tent blows?
The tent, um, the, the tent has roll-up sides to where, you know, rain or shine, if it's not raining, the sides roll up. Uh, and then there's also an option, if it does look like there's a serious threat of rain, to add a, another forty-foot, um, piece to it. And so the tent, under those circumstances, would be forty by a hundred and sixty foot.
What is this venture costing?
Excuse me?
What's the venture costing?
Forty-six thousand dollars is the fee from the car.
What's the potential profit?
Well, if, if you base it off of what they're saying they have made in the past, off of, um, the food and beverage sales and the ticket sales, then, um, if we have a, if we have a thousand people, we will be right at breaking even from the ticket sales and, uh, food and beverage sales. That does not include the pickup from the casino site. And I think we're being conservative on our food and beverage sales and such, so, um...
So you're kinda hoping just to draw people to go to the casino?
Yes, sir.
For the real money?
That's where the, yeah. On any of those events.
Right. And in past experience, when they give you these estimates, you're talking about similar places?
Yes.
Small areas, small venues, out of the way, those kind of things. They've, they've done that. They've done well.
Yes.
Wait, do we know this? Do we know that they've done well and they're successful? You believe them?
Yes. I mean, there's, and the Sports Commission has been to these and looked at the numbers as well, the Pawnee Nation, the Sports Commission.
I mean, this, this team?
This team.
Carmen and the Sky?
Yes. The promoter is a young promoter and that, he has, he has done around eight fights, I believe, at this time. But, um, I'm getting, I'm, I'm doing the due diligence on him. There's nothing that's signed yet, nothing taken to the board to agree on yet. So we are pulling in references and those type of things, so.
Roger, how much money did you spend at the rodeo this year?
Five thousand dollars.
Because I got my Cleveland paper and the Pawnee, uh, Howlers and all that's all over here as a sponsor. And you spent five thousand dollars. Is that the same money that you gave our Palau?
I believe so.
Are you, you told me you were gonna have that number this time.
Well, I, on my next report, I'm not here giving a report tonight.
Do you know?
Yeah, I can, um, I asked for it. I've, I'm gonna go ahead and forward it to everybody.
Yeah.
That information you sent me. I asked for it at the last TDC meeting and he got it.
It's just a rub on me because I go by the wolf and I see Pawnee Rodeo. Now we're gonna see this fight. I never saw Pawnee Palau anywhere on there. I didn't, I didn't see any of that. And I don't think that that's fair to the nation. You work, this is, you guys work for the nation.
Yes, ma'am.
And I didn't see any of it. And that's bothersome. I need, I, I really would, would hope, and this is just a personal thing, um, because I'm a tribal member, that I want you to, I want TDC to be involved in something. Sponsor the adult categories. It's not gonna cost you five grand. You know, throw us a bone here.
We, we did advertise five thousand dollars with the Palau.
Well, I want, I, I would like to see some sponsorship.
We offered, we offered free play, um, in the program. I mean...
And a, and a, what was it, Palau to water? Sweet. Okay. Well, I'd like to get the numbers. That would be really good.
Okay. I'll, I'll email it to you.
So you're just telling us about this fight then? There's nothing for us to do. You're gonna do it anyways, right?
Just discussion.
Yeah. Just information.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about this. Uh, we've been talking about it for a while, having something, you know, and, and we're finally having something. I'm excited that Carmen is involved, a tribal member and things.
She's just gonna make money on it. She's involved, she's making money.
It's a business.
Yeah, yeah, it's a business, but there's, there's a lot more.
Well, anyway, I'm, I'm excited about it. Come on, sister, I'm excited. Those of us who wants to be excited, we can be excited.
I know. I'm not, I'm not a fan of fights, so.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, all I wanna know is, are casinos out there gonna hold these thousand people? What's the capacity level, you know?
Is it even gonna be done by then?
Yes.
September twenty-second.
Hang on a second.
Supposed to be ready in June.
That'd be my only question for this place, you know?
This is information on the TDC board. You know, you, you can, yeah, everybody has their own opinion. But what I'm gonna say here is that if we decide to go for it, I hope you all will get behind it. I've had tribal members that have come to me and said, I'm willing to go around and put signs out at the different surroundings, you know, put up signs to get people in here. So I hope that if the TDC does this, I hope the tribe and I hope the council will get behind it. Because, uh, yes, there's a lot of positives, there's a lot of negatives. If we can break ev, break even, we'll be doing good. That's how you do business. It takes money to make money. And, um, we might, we might not make it, but we're getting our feet wet. That's what you put us on there for. That's what we're trying to do. You all might not agree with it, but we're doing the best we can. It's all done with good intentions. And I, I know what you're saying about not liking fights. I didn't like fights either, but my grandson got in. So...
About this mud wrestling or whatever.
Thank you all.
I have a, I have a question.
It's just a lot of money.
I, I attended that TDC meeting, um, those of you that are on the council. And, um, I, I, you know, I support any, any type of venture that we have with our, uh, development corporation. And I expressed my concerns at that time regarding the money that they're generating and revenueing, you know, on behalf of us as tribal people. Um, at that time, I was, you know, pro and con, I, I submitted my information to the, to the board there. But I just didn't think it was feasible for, to have it over here at the multipurpose. But now there's new information that probably should have been, you know, put out there on the web and saying, oh, well, you know, we've, we've decided to have this over here by the casino, which makes better sense than driving ten miles in on the hope and prayer that the crowd goes back out there. I understand, you know, that the people you're asking for is a younger crowd, you know, right before the night of a big ballgame. You know, some may trickle over here, some may not. I know it's on a football game night. I said I would be going to the football game because I support the Pawnee Black Bear. I support anything that's in this, our community. It's our children, you know? So, um, I'm, I'm glad it came down. It was at fifty-six. Now I'm hearing it's at...
Forty-six.
Forty-six for the fee?
Forty-six.
And are you still trying to sell the tickets at a thousand dollars per ticket? Or on the tables?
Eight hundred, I think he said.
A thousand dollars for the table.
Oh, a thousand dollars for the table.
Eight hundred for the tables, a thousand tickets is what they anticipate on selling.
Oh, I did wrong. That's a, that's a good point though, that comes out like that.
Yeah, yeah, I was like, I mean...
I thought you said eight hundred for table six and, and a thousand for table eight, right?
That's what I thought you said. Is that what you said?
Oh, is that what you said?
It depends on the size of tables.
Yeah.
If it's an eight-seater, then they usually sell them at a thousand dollars. If it's a six-seater, they usually sell them for eight hundred dollars. With doing it in a tent, more than likely, and we would be using the six-seater, which would be eight hundred dollars.
So the tent, who's, who's providing that expense?
The promoter. It's, it's in the, it's in part of that fee.
Um, shortly after I was elected for council, they had the national meeting in Oklahoma City. And Adrian was involved, you know, with the Sports Commission and really wanted it. So I attended the meeting and they expressed at that time, one of them expressed at that time, he said, I can't believe you guys haven't done anything yet. You've been coming to these meetings for two years. That was two years ago. So it's really good to see it and I'm gonna support it.
Well, the, the positives here are... Well, the positives here are that the Stone Wolf expansion will be complete. And so it's the first big venture with the expansion. The sports commission is just now ready to be able to host an event. So the timing is right for this all coming together to be able to do this.
Good.
I support that.
Well, thank you, Roger. Appreciate you. We will move on to item number seven. That's seven. Open forum. Blank here. Open forum.
And thank you for the giving me that. I pretended to say it. I wanted to say it after while y'all were still on these things, issues, because I didn't want, I know I was gonna lose my thought, but I made a few notes. Hopefully y'all remember. First of all, I wanna thank Andrew and the AG and your working committee for these environmental laws. That is so important to our sovereignty and to implementing our, our laws and making it a strong Pawnee Nation. Thank you. And I think under Marshall's administration is when we got that authority to run our own rigs and that sort of thing. So thank you for past councils. Because a lot of these things come up, but there's a lot, but my point is there's a lot of work that goes behind it before it hits its table. It hit, it, you all have something on your agenda and then you approve it. And I'm glad you do and it goes right quick. But I just want everybody to be cognizant of all the work that our staff and others put together before it even gets here. And that said, I wanna say, make another point. This comprehensive budget that you all passed, I congratulate you on that. And I congratulate the staff, our finance officer's not here now, Andrew, finance, all those folks that, as you know, Donna, budget call, coming to the table and working through all these budgets. It's tedious. And I know Angela, as our treasurer, has been very committed to getting this done. So I just want to thank the staff and I hope that you will let them know that we, their acknowledged, their work is acknowledged, that we've got this budget passed. There was a time, maybe two years ago, when we would not pass a comprehensive budget, maybe three years, I can't remember. Couldn't pass a comprehensive budget until the next fiscal year, until it had already started. We're not there, we're not there anymore. We are moving ahead. We're passing a fiscal year budget before the, before the fiscal year starts. That's an accomplishment, believe it or not. That's good. So that said, I wanna ask this council, how come the annual report to the people has not been printed and put out there yet? I know that Angela submitted her report last March or May. That long ago, those figures were out there. People are always asking, as you all know, where's our money going? She submitted that so the report could get out to the people, the annual report. What's the status of the annual report, please?
Being printed as we speak.
How come it's just now, and I, I'm asking the council. Thank you. Thank you. I'm asking.
Well, it was our question too.
I'm asking our elected officials, the president, how come it's not out yet?
Well, we've been asking the same question, why, why it's not out? And it's still, still being worked on. It's still being worked on.
Okay, Andrew, now you can. We were told four weeks ago it's still being worked on.
It's at the printer. It's being printed as we speak.
Why the delay? Do you understand my dilemma though?
Absolutely, I do.
Especially, that could have been out before Palau. There was a lot of.
We always, we always try to get it out before homecoming.
So let's just submit it with our grant.
That's, that's where it needs to be, is before homecoming. Cause that's when we have the most tribal members here.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to go back.
Yeah. And it needed to be. It needed to be.
Thank you, council. Are we still on?
Marshall.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. Always glad to see tonight that you all got some work done. See that you passed some things, that you're still working on the Supreme Court judges. You know, that's kinda disappointing in that, but I was glad to see that you're getting certain days that you're gonna meet on, just to hot scotch you around. I was glad to hear that, say that, you know, getting to, how do I say? Attend these different meetings to see what's going on, to, to find out, like the ones about the, the Supreme Court justices. You need to learn about those. You need to attend these meetings to get acquainted with the ones you wanna vote on. But my main question is, do you all know the Constitution? I got flooded with phone calls Saturday by employees, by tribal members. I was at the hospital with my brother-in-law. He's quite sick. And I was on the phone constantly, wanting to know what happened to the quarterly meeting.
Well, we were there from, we were, we were in that quarterly meeting for a good hour and a half, almost two hours. And the people that showed up there, and the people that showed up there were all addressed. They all got to speak. We all had a good talk. We couldn't make any decisions, but we didn't go anywhere. We, the people that were there.
But you didn't have a meeting?
We didn't have a quorum.
And what does the Constitution say?
Well, that, that's, and no control of ours, right?
But what does the Constitution say?
Well, the Constitution says that you will have a quarterly meeting.
And what were y'all elected for?
Well, is this a test or what, Marshal Ralph?
Yes, it's a test. What were y'all elected for? To uphold the Constitution of Pawnee Nation.
I was, yeah, and I will tell you that there was some mitigating circumstances. And, and there were people that were ill and people couldn't be there. And the people, and that's what, if you were flooded with phone calls, my, my position is, and with all due respect, everybody that, that came into that room got a chance to speak. We got a chance to interact with them. And nobody seemed disgruntled at all.
So you're talking about the one that was rescheduled?
Uh huh, the Saturday.
Or we showed up and we didn't have a quorum?
Yeah.
And we didn't have a quorum?
Right.
So did you actually have a quarterly meeting or just shoot the breeze with constituents?
Well, no, we didn't shoot the breeze. We, we just listened to everybody's.
Well, there was people that came from long ways.
Yeah, they drove in.
Right, but it wasn't an official quarterly meeting.
No, we told them that. Right. We told them.
And that's why we're, that's why we're here tonight.
Right. And I think what Marshall's just is pointing out is that, and I, I had a problem with it.
I did too.
You know, because we, I drove in the night before and, and got here about 11 o'clock to attend that meeting the next day. And.
It's actually the most, one of the most important.
And it's by Constitution, we have to meet quarterly. But there was three people that were not there or there are mitigating circumstances. But I don't know, the Constitution says reasonable. You can, you can miss a council, a council meeting and can be excused if it's reasonable. Which is reasonable, you know? We took, we all, and I, I'm, we all take an oath at office to say that we're gonna uphold the Constitution and meet. So we should, especially when it's a quarterly meeting, we should never not have a quorum at a quarterly meeting.
But we are meeting.
I know, but it's a Saturday.
Not according to the Constitution, the Constitution states a date.
Yeah.
And you were at a precedence fight, calling in for a meeting.
What?
No, that one.
Nobody called in.
Nobody called in.
You called in one time for a meeting.
I did. I did.
We already handled that.
And we beat that.
You know, we keep that thing to death like an old horse.
But what I'm just saying, whether you all believe it or not, I'm just telling you, I was flooded with calls. And most of them said they didn't wanna jump on y'all because they didn't want the wrath. I said, "Hell, I will. What can they do to me?" Kick me out of the tribe? Try it. I'm just expressing what was expressed to me. But you need to read the Constitution and uphold the Constitution. That's what you were elected for. I know you're one short.
For the record, I believe that there has been, I, other council members that's called into meetings under other administrations, including yours.
Yes, that's right.
I just said, what did I just say?
I'm just saying.
The precedent's been set by calling in.
But then you pointed, but then you pointed me out, Marshal. And I was just, I was just saying that there's been other administrations.
The precedent has been set by being called, by calling in.
Oh, so they should have called in. Oh, okay. My bad. Sorry. I thought you were getting mad. Oops. I apologize then. I thought you were.
So there's no reason why there couldn't have been a quorum? I just wanted to point out what the Constitution says. Y'all took an oath. Needs to be lifted up to.
I agree.
That's a good point.
I just wanna say, I appreciate Marshall getting up and saying that. I think his point is very well taken. The Constitution is very specific in terms of when that quarterly meeting is going to be. And, and you're only required to meet by Constitution four times a year. And these, all these other ones are special meetings. That one is a required constitutional meeting. So what he's saying, you all as council members used to, need to, take it seriously. Because it's a reasonable, a reasonable excuse. Now Charlie came to the meeting, I understand, and he had to go deliver a baby. That's a reasonable excuse. So I don't know who defines reasonable, but you all, this is a tribal member, a past president bringing something forward to this council that needs to be heeded. My input.
Were you trying to dismiss by certain time for the family?
Yeah. Those, those, because the service is starting over there and then there's a meal over here and that they're conducting. But, but let me say this before we go anywhere, is, is thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for reminding us of that. And I was not here, but I meant to be here. But, you know, I, I hurt my knee and my knee was all swollen up. And so that's why I wasn't here. And it's still, you know, swollen up. And I, and I did that the night before. And so that's, that's why. If I would've known that we wouldn't have quorum, I would, I would've hobbled over here, but I thought we were all right. And then I got the news that, you know, it was dismissed. And so, you know, I feel like, you know, I let everybody down, you know, by my condition. But is that reasonable? Well, I, I think it was, you know? But that, that was my excuse. That was mine. And so, but I, I thank you for that, Marshal. Thank you for that. And it's something that we will heed in the future, and heed in the future. And Donna, you're right. What we're trying to do is trying to get, get done in regards to the service and in regards to the meal. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up?
I will, but I will address it to you as an individual, because it does pertain to number two regarding the Pawnee Business Council meeting schedule and number four, the election results, and then again, number 10. So I will write you each individual a meeting.
Okay.
As a tribal member.
Appreciate that. Okay, at this time, we can entertain a motion to dismiss?
Someone, someone.
Angela likes the motion. Donna second. All those in favor say yes.